And go right to work for somebody installing solar systems around Hillsborough County.
You just come out of high school with a certification you got for free through your high school and you just go off into the workforce? I thought that was pretty cool.
These are all water towers, and this is a solar oven.
We do learn valuable things like the solar ovens. We had a terrible hurricane last year, so this will help you heat water, you can make ramen noodles. If you use that specific little plate, you could fry chicken, you could heat food for your family.
A lot of these things you can use to help renovate your home. I re-cocked my bathroom for my dad. That's normally in my dad's wheelhouse, but I was like, it's broken, and we learned how to cock for these.
When I took this class, I learned how to use all of the tools that I should know already. I wanted to take this class because I had no idea how to take apart anything or make anything. Mr. Reeve is in it to win it. He's there to help you out whenever you need help, but he's not going to coddle you, which I really enjoy. So when it came to building cars, and I had no idea where to start, he provides like basic plans and ideas, but he won't hold your hand and tell you exactly where to put everything. He'll let you fail, which I really enjoy.
Mr. Reeve is a great teacher. One thing cool about him, he did, used to work for NASA, which is great. And he's very helpful. He's a great teacher, and I will miss him once I graduate.
It's an awesome school. It's the best, best school in the county, and I would put Leonard's, Leonard's Engineering students against anybody.
On April 28th...
Good morning. I'd like to call to order this board meeting of November 17th, 2020, of the Hillsborough County School Board. Member Kona will now lead us in a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Welcome, friends, family, and guests. If you could, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. If you could all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
If you could please silence your electronic devices at this time, that would be greatly appreciated. And let the record reflect that all board members are present with the exception of Ms. Schamberger. Board members, I'd like to go over the format of today's reorganization meeting. Based on the Governor's executive order for the reopening of Florida, we are now permitting up to 50 people to be present in our boardroom. Given the size and orientation of the boardroom, we can do this safely. Today's an exciting day for our incoming new board members. However, social distancing guidelines have served us well so far, so we are asking that after each incoming board member is sworn in, that their supporters head back into the lobby to watch the proceedings on television, and that way it can be fair for everyone, and we can still maintain social distancing. We do have a few extra people in the audience today to support our newest board members. So, thank you in advance for cooperating in regard to safety for all of us here today. I will now read the board guidelines, and so as we begin today's meeting, as I mentioned, please silence your electronic devices. There are speakers in the boardroom behind me that allow board members to hear the meeting upon stepping away from the dais if they go back to board chambers, and this meeting can be viewed on closed cap, with closed captioning on the live webcast, on cable television, and on the video monitors here in the auditorium. It can also be viewed with closed captioning on the, in the online video archive on our website. So now we are going to have some public comment this morning before we begin, and the board welcomes comments from citizens and values their input to the board. This is the board's formal reorganization meeting, but we will allow public comment to address any of the items on the limited agenda that we have today. When addressing the board, we ask that you please state your name and speak clearly into the microphone, so, and each speaker will have three minutes. The lectern will be cleaned after each speaker, and so the speakers we have today, I believe we have five that have signed up for public comment. The first one is Tucker Verdi. Is Tucker Verdi here? Tucker Verdi? Okay, we'll move on to the next, is, the next one is Damaris Allen. And she, as she's making her way up to the lectern, I'll go ahead and let you know, the next speaker will be Gattulio Gonzalez Mulatieri, followed by Ryan Hozinski. Good morning, welcome. You have three minutes.
Good morning. First of all, my name is Damaris Allen, and I have the privilege of serving as your chair for your Citizens Advisory Committee. The first thing I would like to do is thank the outgoing board members for their service. We appreciate you and the work that you have done over the past however many years, because there's a variety. The reason I'm coming to you today is, and welcome, oh, sorry, and welcome the new board members, they're not in front of me. The first thing I want to do is just share a little bit about the CAC, the Citizens Advisory Committee, and I'll, from now on, I'll refer to it as the CAC. The CAC was formed in the 70s, and it was a mandate by the Florida Legislature. However, our district saw such value in consistently having the input of parents and stakeholders that they have kept the CAC in place. Each board member has the opportunity to appoint three representatives that serve for a term of two years. These representatives have to be, at least, at least two of them have to be parents with children enrolled in Hillsborough County Public Schools. And, and, and this is a real, we talked a lot about recently about the, the two-year term and the gift that a two-year term can be. Some of our new, many of our new board members will have representatives that are already appointed to them, and that will get to these two-year terms, and that is a true gift because you get to meet with people you may not have otherwise chosen. And then it increases the diversity of our board, which is, and, and the input to the board, which is so important. The CAC members, as a CAC member, were invited to check our agendas at the door, and remember the reason that we are serving. It is not because I get to impose my will on the Hillsborough County School District, but I get to bring the feedback of my community and stakeholders and share with you the concerns that they have, and work together towards solutions. And in order to work together toward, toward a common goal, we have to be really honest about the challenges that we're facing, and that is the unique gift that we have together as a diverse body of the CAC, is that each of us comes with our own set of experiences, and we get to come to you and bring the feedback of our community and be honest about the face, the challenges we're facing, because sometimes you don't always get that honest input from your constituents, or sometimes you get one-sided honest input, which can be a challenge for you. So, I just, I just am honored to be able to serve you today, and I encourage all of you, especially the new board members, to use us as a resource and to, to hear the feedback from your community, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, lectern is cleaned, will be Gattulio Gonzalez Mulatieri, followed by Ryan Hozinski, and then Mr. Joe Robinson. Good morning and welcome. You have three minutes.
Good morning. Good morning to Hillsborough School Board, the ladies and gentlemen, the outgoing, and congratulations to the incoming. Now, I've been a lifelong resident of Tampa, Florida, and I've been a student in these schools, so I'm, I'm here to speak on that perspective. That's the, the nature of my public comment. Today, I'd like to speak on the term comorbidity. It's a medical term. It means that a patient is stricken with at least one or more medical conditions co-occurring with a primary condition, and this has a point. So two or more diseases that feed off one another, making the overall patient, their health, worse. In this instance, the Hillsborough County School System is the patient, and they're suffering from a societal comorbidity. Oftentimes, children from very specific zip codes find themselves at the mercy of the criminal justice system. My question for you all is what was done to prevent it? We need to take a different approach. Instead of criminalizing bad behavior, we should be hiring more school nurses, psychologists, and social workers to address these social comorbidities. To that end, I'd like to stress the importance of social workers and psychologists in schools. It's all too common for students of low and middle-income communities to grapple with a tumultuous environment if they're not already dealing with conflicts or scarcity at home. The role of the school psychologist and the social worker is to bridge those gaps or remedy the system, the symptoms which make disparities, be they racial, economic, or environmental, and an unfortunate reality. So my childhood friends and I were victims of the school-to-prison pipeline. I'm the only one that's left to tell the tale today. So I'm here to urge and sort of demand, because you're elected officials, you represent me and my community, to take the proper steps to avoid the perpetuation of stories like my own. Thank you.
Thank you very much for sharing your story. Our next speaker, after the lectern is cleaned, is Ryan Hozinski, and our last speaker will be Mr. Joe Robinson. Good morning. You have three minutes.
Good morning, every, good morning, everyone. It's a season of gratitude, so I want to first begin with an opportunity to say thank you. For those of you who have served on this board and are transitioning, we appreciate your service to our community, and I want you to know that. To our new board members who are behind me, welcome. I'm sure that you will serve our community well. Superintendent Davis, I also wanted to thank you and CTA leadership for the collaborative letter that you wrote and sent to Commissioner Corprin about veteran teacher pay and school grades. I would urge you to go just a bit further and perhaps, you know, really advocate for canceling of the testing this year. Some of the superintendents have already done that. We know it's, and the data we get, which is always meaningless and just jury-rigged as it is, is not going to serve anybody, and it's only going to stress people out. The real reason I am here, however, and I'm wearing black today, is because I feel like we should be mourning the loss of our profession. Dr. Han, I'm sure you know this all too well with what's happening at USF. And I'm very disturbed by all these columns and resolutions and everything else that I'm reading from school boards, not only here, but, you know, Pasco, Pinellas, everybody has a resolution to say about what's going on at USF, but no one talks about the root problem, and that is the Florida Legislature. I would hope that the board, moving forward at every turn, does the utmost to educate the public about the Florida Legislature and how they control all the flow of the funding. When I moved here nearly 20 years ago, we were 27th in public education investment and 29th in teacher pay, about middle of the pack. By the time I started teaching, 2003, we had slipped a little bit. We were 31 and 33 respectively. Now we are 43rd in public education spending and 47th in teacher pay. It would seem that the Florida Legislature is not interested in this as a profession. They want to put bodies in and burn and churn them out. No pension costs, you attract them in with that high level, high level salary for Florida, but it's, it's really, it's all for naught. We are witnessing the decline of this profession, and what's happening at USF is just a symptom of this disease brought on by the Florida Legislature. So I ask you, for years I've been saying, when we are silent, we are complicit, we can no longer be silent anymore. USF is having a rally on Friday at 6:00 PM. I would highly encourage all of the board members to be there and rally on behalf of our profession. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our last speaker will be Mr. Joseph Robinson. Welcome, Mr. Robinson. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board members, Cindy Stewart, thank you for your service. Steve, Kona, thank you for your service. Ms. Schamberger, you ain't here, but thank you for your service. Ms. Gray, continue what you do. I know it's controversial. Let me just say this, there are going to be some difficult days ahead, very difficult days ahead. Ms. Perez, difficult days ahead. Ms. Snively, Ms. Har, difficult days ahead. But I think that God has a similar team that can solve that problem, but it's going to take some real fine tuning and digging down under the leaves. This district has been around for a long time, had cronyism, nepotism, and all of the other isms, and it's time now to have a new day. It's time now, we have a so-called, you know, Teachers Association Board that love teachers, no problem, we got more educators now. But I say this, you're going to have to find some money, and it's going to be tough. Nobody wants to raise taxes. Nobody wants to have another referendum, but I tell you this, having been here a long time, done seen people come and go, we got a new administration coming to Washington, DC eventually, eventually it's just going to happen, and they're going to be concentrating on education. So make sure your lobbyists get busy in the United States Department of Education, because it's going to be a major wave of putting money in education, hopefully reducing some of these student loans around here. And the last thing I'm going to say here is that you got a good leader over there, Mr. Davis and the team, he's a symbol, I don't care what anybody says, and people don't like change, and you're going to have to have change to have success for children. Our business, our customers are the children, not the, not the set of teachers, the children is what pay the bills. When you can't find 8,000 of them, X telehasse how much money you get, you get zero if you can't find them. So I say this, you got one shot, and that is add along taxes, and I'm saying it first because I'm scared of taxes, you know, and it's a line item called debt service. We never used it. You don't have to put it on a referendum. It takes four votes from this board. You might want to look at debt service military, because you're going to need some funding to take this district and maintain it. They're doing the best they can, but you can only cut out, reduce as much as you can. So there's difficult days ahead, God's going to bless you, you got a good team, use the team now. Do your homework, and make sure that we keep communications open, and let's keep it real. And as I tell everybody, walk by faith and not by sight.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. That was our final speaker this morning. We're actually going to move into a few resolutions. I'd like to, although she may not be present in the auditorium, I would like to honor Ms. Schamberger for her service to our school district for the last four years, and so we have a, a resolution that I'd like to read, and we will get that to her after today. So whereas Tamara P. Schamberger, a Tampa native, is ending a four-year period of service as a member of the School Board of Hillsborough County, Florida, on Tuesday, November 17th, 2020, and whereas Ms. Schamberger's advocacy for equity has significantly improved the lives of students across this district, and whereas Ms. Schamberger brought professionalism, business acumen, acumen, and extensive experience in management to the Hillsborough County School Board and its stakeholders, and whereas Ms. Schamberger's compassion and dedication to safety helped the district navigate through the onset of a global pandemic, and whereas Ms. Schamberger's advocacy for children from all backgrounds shows her commitment to this district by developing programs and supports that empowered students and staff, now therefore be it resolved, that the School Board of Hillsborough... now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of Hillsborough County, Florida, deems it fitting and proper to publicly recognize the distinguished contributions of Tamara P. Schamburger and express our great appreciation to her. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be placed in the minutes of the School Board of Hillsborough County, Florida, and said page dedicated to Ms. Tamara P. Schamburger, and a copy of this resolution be made available to the public as we adopt this resolution, the 17th day of November, 2020. Board members, I do need a motion and a second to adopt this resolution. I have a motion by Member Stewart and a second by Member Kona. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please vote when your lights appear. Okay, thank you, Dr. Han. Please reflect that it is unanimous, and with the exception of Ms. Schamburger away from the dais today. So, thank you, Ms. Schamburger, if you're watching. Thank you for your service to our school district. I'd also like to recognize our Vice Chair, Steve Kona, by reading a resolution for him as well. And whereas Steve P. Kona III is ending a two-year period of meritorious service as a member of the School Board of Hillsborough County, Florida on Tuesday, November 17, 2020; and whereas Mr. Kona's unwavering concern and tireless efforts to provide the finest quality education made a difference not just to the students of Hillsborough County Public Schools, but also to the community as a whole; and whereas Mr. Kona's passion for ensuring students had a well-rounded education and opportunities in the career and technical aspects of their learning experiences; and whereas Mr. Kona worked tirelessly to provide the best options to all learners during the unprecedented times of the global pandemic; and whereas Mr. Kona always put children first and works unselfishly on their behalf, now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of Hillsborough County, Florida, deems it fitting and proper to publicly recognize the distinguished contributions of Steve P. Kona III. Be it further resolved that the achievement of those whose lives he affected will forever remain a tribute to him; and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be certified by the Superintendent of Schools of Hillsborough County, Florida, and immediately presented to Mr. Steve P. Kona III; and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be placed in the minutes of the School Board of Hillsborough County, Florida, and said page dedicated to Mr. Steve P. Kona III, and a copy of this resolution be made available to the public as it is adopted this 17th day of November, 2020. Board members, I need a motion and a second to adopt this resolution for Mr. Steve P. Kona III. And we have a motion by Member Stewart and a second by Member Perez. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please vote when your lights appear. And it is unanimous, even, I don't know why yours isn't showing. You don't have to, but it passes. Thank you very much. Let's give Steve a round of applause. And I'd like to present this resolution. I have a few things to give you, so. And I would love to present, let me read this out so you can hear it. This is artwork by Natalie Tarazas, I'm always saying that right, in second grade at Mintz Elementary School. It's a beautiful photo of a sunset, and I'm thinking that's Tampa.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Yeah, we know how much you love Tampa, so congratulations.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and we have one more.
Oh, hold on. Sorry. I just wanted to show this beautiful piece of artwork, because even though Ms. Schamburger is not here to accept it, I think we should recognize the student who dedicated the artwork to her, and this is by William Lucassio, and he's in fifth grade at Mueller Elementary School. And that's a beautiful piece of art. We'll be giving that to Ms. Schamburger.
No worries. Thank you. We have one more recognition today before we swear in our new board members. Like to take a few minutes to, for a very important recognition, we'd like to share a recognition and presentation in the honor of our outgoing chairwoman, Ms. Melissa Snively. So, I will read the resolution. Whereas Mrs. Snively has completed her term as Chair of the Hillsborough County School Board in Hillsborough County, Florida, and whereas Ms. Snively's passion for education and leadership has been a positive and driving force for our students, staff, and school board; and whereas she continues to advocate for student safety, effective disciplinary policy, and equity for every student; and whereas her guidance and compassion helped Hillsborough County Schools navigate through the onset of a worldwide pandemic with the health, safety, and education of all learners held at the highest priority; and whereas, under her leadership, the School Board of Hillsborough County hired the first superintendent from outside the district in more than 50 years; and whereas Ms. Snively is involved in the community, has served many local organizations' leadership positions, including but not limited to the PTSA, the American Cancer Society, the Junior League, the Brandon Community Roundtable, and the Tampa Theater. And whereas Ms. Snively oversees tremendous development in her area of her tenure on the school board, advocated passionately for her constituents when it came to overcrowding schools and boundary changes; and whereas she was instrumental in opening of the school district's first high school in more than 10 years and another much-needed elementary school in South County. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of Hillsborough County, Florida, deems it fitting and proper to publicly recognize the distinguished contributions of Melissa Snively and to express its great appreciation to Mrs. Snively for her efforts as work as Chair of the Hillsborough County School Board. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be certified by the Superintendent of Schools of Hillsborough County and immediately presented to Mrs. Snively. But it further, let it further be resolved that a copy be placed in the minutes and the page dedicated to Ms. Melissa Snively, and a copy of this resolution be available to the public. So, board members, I need a motion and a second to adopt this resolution. I have a motion by Member Stewart and a second by Dr. Han. Any comments?
Thank you, Member Kona. Madam Chair, you have taken four years, well, actually five, six, I don't know how many years of your life to dedicate.
Feels like 30.
Yeah, I know, to dedicate everything that you have for the passion and for, just for our children. And I hear that Joe Robinson wants us to be standing forward and forth for our children. And I will say that you have been indicative and emblematic of a student-centered district. I also want to remark that being a public servant changes you. It has to, and usually in a positive way, because you have to change according to events such as COVID. And, board members, new, and that's a hard thing to do, to change. And we see that, Member Snively, and I know Jim Porter will remind all of us how much endeavors, how those very important committees that you joined and had to experience more change in your life. I just want to thank you and also remind the world an appreciation for what a public servant is, and Member Kona and Member Schamburger, who's not here. It's a big, it's a big give, and no further comment than that, but my heartfelt thanks, and I'm sure the board is also right behind me on that. Thank you, Member Snively.
Thank you, Member Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Member Snively, to sit in that seat is an honor. I have sat in that seat before. But this year, it feels like your chairmanship has been longer and more draining than any I've ever seen. And you have continued to hold your head high and represent this district and represent this board across this community in places that I don't think we ever thought we would have to. You have sat on the EPG for longer than any board member or superintendent has had to in decades and weathered a lot of things that this community, decisions had to be made, and you were there as the voice of this district, which is the largest employer and the keeper of all the children. And that was difficult, and I know that there were a lot of hard times there. And so, I appreciate your service to this board, not just as the board chair, but as vice chair. And for the last six years, I'm going to be leaving here, but I know that you and I will continue to talk as you remain here and I'm down the street. So, I just want to thank you for your service over the last year. I know that it has been extremely difficult and trying. And everyone in this district should be grateful that we have a chair that was capable of standing up to the challenges that have, we have weathered over the last seven months since COVID took over this community. And I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for that, because I'm not sure that everybody could do what you've had to do. So, Member Kona, you're leaving. I know that it is, you've brought in two years things to this district that I haven't seen board members who've been here much longer bring forward. So, I want to thank you for that. Your district is better because of your service, and I think that they will miss you tremendously. You've accomplished so much. And I, again, say that I am grateful to call you my friend. For Ms. Schamburger, who I hope is watching from home, it has been my honor to sit next to you for many years as you were elected and I was here as a senior board member at the time. But let us not forget either board members and for this community. Ms. Schamburger and I represented for a long number of years nationally this board. Ms. Schamburger sat with me at Cube and at the National School Boards Association and at the state level. And I don't want the new and incoming board members or this district to forget. We have a responsibility to also be a part of those communities. We're the seventh-largest district in the nation, and we have a lot to offer and a lot of wisdom to learn across this country from other boards for the things that they do and do differently than us. So, I want to thank her for her service. Again, her district has changed because of the things that she stood up for and the things that she fought for. And I hope that the incoming board member who's going to replace her continues to fight for a lot of those same things. I know him, and I know he will do that. So, thank you.
Dr. Han?
Thank you. Well, Member Stewart, certainly I echo everything she said, Member Snively. You've been an amazing leader through probably one of the most difficult eras of this school district, and I'm so grateful for that. Also, just, you know, proud to work with you on the school board moving forward and to call you a friend. But you, I mean, she really laid out every single obstacle and challenge that you have faced as a chair. And so, but I can't thank you enough. It was a very challenging time, and I know nobody on this board wanted to be in your shoes, but you saw us through it, and I am eternally grateful for that. Steve, I feel like I'm going to break up. You have really been an amazing board member, and you've accomplished more in the last two years than most people in the board. And you always focused on the students. And you put people before politics, and I will miss you, and I'm so thankful to call you a friend. It's Ms. Schamburger who's not here. Tammy, you were so incredibly welcoming to me when I came onto the board, and you were an amazing board chair. You were my first board chair, and you did an amazing job, and you were a wonderful role model, so articulate and so passionate about the community you served, and I will miss you greatly as well. I wish you were here today to give you a hug goodbye, but I'm sure I will see you soon.
Thank you, Dr. Han. Ms. Perez?
Thank you, Port members. You know, leadership is difficult during any time. But even more so during a time that happened, that we had no template for. The last time something like this happened nationally and globally was back in 1918. But with a new superintendent, and then you came in as a new chair, and then a new co-chair. You took the reins, and, you know, we rolled with it. And we had some difficult times, especially, you know, with the issues of mental health. And, you know, the district is still challenged, but we're stronger for it. And Steve, you championed programs that, you know, I saw my son become a different person for the programs that you championed here in the district. So, you know, and, and, and Member Schamburger. You know, when we won an award that we're so honored to have won, you know, for several years in a row as the only district who has been able to do that. So, you know, this board has made a difference in Hillsborough County. And, you know, Steve, you will be missed, you know, as a part of this board. And whatever you do, I know that you're going to do good things, because you've done good things here in this district. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Perez, and, darn it, Stacy? Thank you all for the kind words, and to our chair, thank you. It's been an honor to serve with you and serve in a year that's been extremely difficult for all of us. And, you know, we've come out of it better. I know I'm a better person. I'm a better father. I'm a better leader because of the work. So, thank you. It's been an honor to serve with all of you. Mr. Superintendent, keep up the good fight. Mr. Porter, thank you for your service, and thank you all. So, with that said, I'm going to stop talking and let the new board come up here. And before that, we'll, I have, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Superintendent.
No worries, sir.
And I still have to give her her award, so go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. I can leave. First and foremost, you know, Ms. Schamburger's not here, but, you know, I thank her for her leadership, her trust in me to come and drive, you know, the seventh-largest school district in the nation. And, you know, one thing Ms. Schamburger always did was fault for her community and fault for Hillsborough County, and I'm grateful for that. And she did a wonderful job trying to work collectively and hold me and my team accountable to be able to create magical moments for children. So, my hat's off to Ms. Schamburger, and, you know, we know she'll always be with us as we transition forward. And, Mr. Kona, you have been a major part of a number of initiatives and projects that I had an opportunity to interact with and adopt for children. You know, you continue to create pathways for the workforce that I haven't seen in many school districts that I've worked for. So, you know, thank you for your continued commitment. Thank you for your professionalism, and thank you for your genuine push to protect children and help them become full-option graduates every single day. And then to the chair, you know, as Ms. Stewart said and everyone has said, not everyone has a good chance to build the airplane whilst in the air. And you have definitely taken on a pandemic, not only your chairship. We feel like it somewhat may have been hijacked due to the fact that there were so many different issues that kind of, you know, were exposed every second during the last, I would say, eight, nine months. You've done a wonderful job. You know, I've been able to see and live in and work through a number of school districts, and I don't say this because of our relationship. You are the best chair I've interacted with. You have controlled the, every school board meeting. You brought professionalism. You stayed matter-to-the-fact. You've held all of us accountable to follow, you know, Robert's rules, or you call him Bobby's rules. And, you know, I'm grateful. And, you know, for anyone that elects to transition to public education and gives their heart, their soul, and the energy for four years, two years, whatever it may be, my hat's off to each of you. And I call you a partner. I call you a friend, and I look forward to our continued work in this community, because it takes all of us to do some special things together. So, thank each of you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. So, we do have a motion on the floor and a second. We have all of our comments, so if we could, please vote on this resolution. And it is unanimous. Congratulations on that. And I have all sorts of prizes for you. I have a great piece of artwork as well from Journey Langer, a fifth grader at Alafaya Elementary School. It's a beautiful piece of artwork, and it's got her thank you on it for stuff. And we have all sorts of goodies, so let's just get them all out here.
And we have all sorts of goodies, so let's just get them all out here. Take this off. We have your share file. And the resolution.
You want to just put it right here? In the suitcase. Thank you very much. I want to thank some people. First, I want to thank God for getting us through this year together. And then I want to thank my husband, David, who's out in the audience today, for being my rock. Twenty-one years of marriage and four children, and it still feels like we're newlyweds. So. And then I want to thank this board. As I think every chair, when they're elected, has certain things that they aspire to try and accomplish and achieve for the school district as they step into that position. And as everyone knows, everything changed at the end of February for our school district. I'm very honored to have had the opportunity to sit in this place, to work with Mr. Kona. I'm going to be very sad to see you leave because you, as mentioned previously, have done so much in the two years. Sometimes I think, wow, you've done more in two years than a lot of us board members have gotten accomplished in four or eight years. And so it's really been amazing to watch you work in the district for our students. And with Ms. Schamberger, I really enjoyed being her vice chair. I thought she was an amazing chair, and although, you know, we had our moments, but I really respected her, and I still respect her, of course, and I hope to continue to have a relationship with Ms. Schamberger because she was a great leader in this school district. But I want to thank the board for really, together, working so hard for the school district in these very strange and unusual times. Like Mr. Davis said, I felt like we were building an airplane while it was in the air, and it was more challenging than I could have ever imagined being here. But it was also a very, it was a growth experience, a learning experience, and I feel like I am a better person because of the challenges. I was mentioning to Mr. Goss this morning out there in the audience, I think he's with Jared over there, that, you know, God puts you in certain places at certain times for a reason, and you don't ask questions. It's destiny to be in certain places, and all you can do is figure out what he's trying to teach you when you're in that position. And so I really appreciate the support of the board and the community, and we even came together, and a lot of people don't know this, but the Florida School Board Association has a designation for school boards, and because of the pandemic, we never really talked about it publicly, but we actually came together and completed our master board certification this year. And, yeah, it was really the first time. And how many years that a board completed that master certification? At least ten years, over a decade that we did that together. And I thank you all for the support as the chair, and I look forward to the new chapter in our Hillsborough County schools. So, thank you very much, and we will move on to our next part, our next exciting part. So let's give Mr. Kona, Ms. Stewart, another round of applause for their service to this district. Okay. Thank you. Bye. So the next segment of our meeting is the investiture portion, and how this will work is that we have each of our four board members who will be sworn in, they have chosen officials to assist them with the oath of office ceremony, and I will ask the first person to come down to the front, and there are two microphones, one for the board member and one for their official, officiant, and we will do it in the following order. It will be the Honorable Judge Evans will administer the oath to Ms. Gray from District Seven, and then the Honorable Judge Little to Nadia Combs from District One, and then the Reverend Dr. Russell Meyer to Jessica Vaughn in District Three, and then the Honorable Judge Little also will administer the oath to Henry Sheik Washington from District Five. So we're going in order of tenure and then in order of District One, Three, and Five. Okay? So if I could, please ask Judge Evans, the Honorable Judge Evans, to come forth and Ms. Gray to go down, and we will proceed with the first oath of office.
Would you raise your right hand and be sworn in? Please repeat after me. I do solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government.
Constitution and government.
The United States and the state of Florida.
The United States and the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
Hold the office under the Constitution of the state.
To hold the office of the Constitution of the state.
That I will well and faithfully.
I will faithfully and will.
Perform the duties of school board member.
Perform the duties of school board member.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
She'll return to the dais. And then the next individual we'd like to welcome to the front, now that the microphones are clean, is the Honorable Judge Little, and he will administer the oath to Nadia Combs from District One. And I apologize, I should have mentioned this, if you have a family member or two that would like to join you during the oath, you're more than welcome to bring them forward
These are my children, Ian and Ava, and my husband.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Madam Chair, Superintendent Addison, it is my pleasure to install, invest, our friend of a few hours, Nadia Combs. She's a friend of Sheik Washington, and anyone that's a friend of Sheik Washington is a friend of mine, so that's a connection. Would you raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And government of the United States.
And government of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And the state of Florida.
And that I am duly qualified to hold office.
And I'm duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the state.
Under the Constitution of the state.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
And I will well and faithfully perform.
The duties of school board member.
The duties of the school board member.
Hillsborough County.
Of Hillsborough County.
And I want you to also pledge that you will always promote and imply or impose policies that will protect our children, our administrators, and our parents.
Absolutely.
All right.
That will be.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And if anyone would like to make space in the auditorium, we are, there are television screens in the lobby. If you're not comfortable staying inside the auditorium with this amount of people, you're more than welcome to watch the remaining investiture out in the lobby, depending on your level of comfort. All right, the next individual I'd like to invite to the front is Reverend Dr. Russell L. Meyer to administer the oath to Jessica Vaughn from District Three.
This is my son, Zachariah Kapadia, and my husband, Neelish Kapadia.
Oh, he needs to hold the Bible, doesn't he?
Yeah. He's going to hold it. Dear board members, Superintendent, it's an honor and pleasure, and Jessica, thank you for inviting me to do this. Please repeat after me. I do solemnly swear and affirm.
I, Jessica Vaughn, do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States and the state of Florida.
The Constitution of the United States and of Florida.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
To hold the office under the Constitution of the state.
To hold office under the Constitution of the state.
And that I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Perform the duties of school board member.
Perform the duties of school board member.
Of Hillsborough County.
Of Hillsborough County.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. And along with Judge Little, I think that extra affirmation that I will make certain to protect everyone in this school district in every possible way is a great affirmation, if you would make that.
Absolutely, I affirm. Thank you. Thank you, Reverend Meyer. Thank you all.
And last, but certainly not least, we invite the Honorable Judge Little back to the front to administer the oath to Henry Sheik Washington from District Five.
Yes, I have my wife, Ms. Cheryl Washington, my daughter, Dr. Jamil Washington, my son, Henry Washington Jr., and my mother-in-law, Ms. Hattie Bird White, not Washington, but she's almost like a Washington, Hattie Bird White. And we have our pastor from Allen Temple, the Reverend Dames.
Thank you all again for inviting me. Please repeat after me, and I have known Henry for fifty years. So we go way back, and it's a pleasure to do this this morning. Please repeat after me. I do solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support.
I will support.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And government of the United States.
And government of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
And that I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
To hold office.
To hold office.
Under the Constitution of the state.
Under the Constitution of the state.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
I will well and faithfully perform.
The duties of.
The duties of.
School board member.
School board member.
And I say the same thing that I said to Ms. Combs, that you will always promote policies and procedures that will protect and defend our children, our staff, and our administrators.
I will always do that.
Thank you. So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, good luck to you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Washington, we welcome you up to the dais. And new board members, newly elected board members. Newly elected board members, in the same order which you were sworn in, we will ask for any comments that you would like to make, and we'll begin with Member Gray, if you have any comments you'd like to make at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a slew of them, but I forgot them at home, so here goes. You know, it always starts with a big thank you, appreciation, and support throughout the communities, and when we say communities in my world, the communities make up the schools. So I want to thank, of course, my husband who is there, my family. I want to thank the Teachers Union, CTA, PTA, thanking the wonderful teachers, their support staff inclusive, is the ESP and the PARAS, our bus drivers, and certainly our custodians. And going right back to the local officials and also our business partners, many of these people are in the room or are watching this, along with our religious leaders. And when I, when we run for a community, excuse me, a countywide race, it is vast, and I'm very, very confident by the fact that our various communities of color, of various cultures, various thought processes, you know, I feel so attached in a very meaningful way because when you're a teacher, you look at what's the most important thing to every one of those groups, and that is their children. And it is without doubt that I sincerely am thankful for these meaningful entities because they seriously care and want a board member to care for the well-being of their child, children, significant others. And I think that was the best validation upon getting reelected, and I just hope that, and I will, serve to the best degree that I can manage for the entire county. And I'm very happy also and appreciative to this great board who have stood by me. We have had many hurdles, as Member Snively knows so well, Member Hahn as well, and Member Perez, we're going to have a lot more work in front of us. But through the collaborative process, Madam Chair, Snively, I believe we'll get there, and I thank every one of you for being part of not only who I am, but of what I will be doing in the, for the well-being of all of our children in this district. Thank you.
We'll now hear from Nadia Combs.
I would first like to thank all the voters in Hillsborough County District One who elected me to be a member of our school board. I would also like to thank my family, my mother, who's always supported and sacrificed so much for me, my husband, whom has always encouraged all of my dreams and stood by my side, to my children, who I hope that through my journey, you see that through hard work... side, to my children, who I hope that through my journey you see that through hard work you can achieve anything. I would like to also thank my lifelong friends, many who are here today, and to the people that I met through the campaign trail who worked countless hours for our grassroots campaign, to all the organizations and newspapers who endorsed me and helped provide this opportunity, thank you so much. I was born in a third world country and moved to the United States when I was eight years old. My first teacher, Ms. Wilson from Daytona, not only helped me with my broken English, but she instilled in me a love of learning. I attended public schools throughout my life and was provided the foundation ability for endless options in my life. Although I grew up with very little, I was fortunate enough to have teachers and individuals in my life who always encouraged me that I could do or be anything that I set my mind to. As the first person to graduate from college in my family, I knew that my goal in my life was to work with and make a positive impact with children. My lifelong mentor, Dr. Barbara Cruz, a professor at the College of Education at the University of South Florida, was an integral part of involving and providing me the tools to teach and work with children. As I take office today, I want the community to know that I will always work tirelessly to advocate for every student in Hillsborough County. I want our community to know that our children's academic, social, and emotional needs will be at the forefront of my decision-making. I know that my passion, background, and experience will be an asset to our board. As a lifelong educator, I realize that our teachers, administrators, and supporting staff have had a very challenging year. I want each and every member of our district to know that I'm here to listen and to support you. I will always be available to our community and hope to build a bridge between our community, businesses, and schools. I believe that I've been elected to strengthen the educational system in our public schools. My vision is to prepare students for life, regardless if they choose vocational, technical, military, or the college path, that they have the fundamental skills and the love of learning to succeed in life. As a board, we must work together in a collaborative manner to ensure that regardless of where a child comes from, they are given the same opportunities to succeed in life. That means valuing each and every individual in our school community and prioritizing public education. Thank you, and I look forward to serving our community.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
Well, that is a tough act to follow. Thanks, Nadia. Well, first of all, thank you, Madam Chair, thank you Reverend Meyer, not only for swearing me in, but for being such a guiding light within our community. Your steady, fast, and consistent messages of hope, love, equality, justice, and compassion have guided our community through some of our worst days. Next, I'd like to thank both my husband and my son, my husband Neelish and my son Zachariah, for all of the love, hard work, support, and sacrifice they both invested into my campaign. You are both my heart, my happiness, and the motivation that drives me. I'd also like to thank my campaign staff for their dedication, their hard work, their flexibility, and their patience. Thank you to my amazing campaign volunteers, especially my best friend Jennifer Hart. Campaign volunteers really are the lifeline of any grassroots campaign, and every single one of you directly contributed to this victory. I'd like to thank all of my friends and family for their generosity, their unwavering belief in me, and their never-ending support. I'd like to thank all of our community leaders, publications, organizers, and organizations who either endorsed our campaign or rallied behind our platform for progress and showcased an almost unprecedented coalition of support. I did not do this alone. Next, I'd like to say a special thank you to District Three and all the voters who place their trust in me and who have given me this incredible opportunity to serve Hillsborough County. And finally, I want to thank all of our dedicated, selfless, passionate teachers, administration, and school staff who are literally the heart and soul of our education system. To quote Nelson Mandela, "There can be no keener revelation of a society's soul than the way in which it treats our children." It is my sincere belief that in order to fulfill the American dream, all of our children deserve access to a free, quality, public education in schools where they feel properly supported, safe, nurtured, and valued. It is this fundamental belief in every student's right to a quality of public education, combined with my core values and my commitment to our teachers, administrators, and school staff, that will guide my service as your board member. And while Hillsborough County still has a tremendous amount of challenges before us, as well as a plethora of hard work to be done, I feel extremely hopeful about our future, not only about the future of this board together, but for the future of Hillsborough County schools collectively. One thing this election has taught me is that our community is ready to put aside the divides that we faced and come together for the better of our students and for our schools. In closing, thank you all for your support and for allowing me the honor of serving on the Hillsborough County School Board.
Thank you, Member Vaughn, and Mr. Washington.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did write a speech because I want to talk from my heart. I'm very, I am very, very elated and happy to be sent on this board. You know, I sat out there for 12 years as an area superintendent, and I never thought I would be up here on the board, even though you never know where God will take you to. But I've been very blessed in my life. I have a wonderful wife, son, daughter, grandkids, my mother-in-law, and I'd like to tell this story a little bit, and I say this quite often, sometime I say, you know, I made a mistake, probably I should have married my mother-in-law, she's a great person. She is fantastic cook, does it all. She's my right hand too. I really, I really love my mother-in-law. But I want to say this, and I want everybody, all my guests that came today, please stand up because I owe you a lot. We worked hard. Thank you. And I don't want to call out names, but you know, because sometime you miss a name, but I really thank you guys and I love you from the bottom of my heart. And as well as Bishop Patty, we have Bishop Patty here. Bishop Patty, stand, please to be acknowledged. I tell you what, if I played sports again, she definitely would be one of my coaches on my team, I tell you. She's a hard driver, and Newt Brother, and Mr. Hearns, and Jay, it's a lot of people that contributed to this, to make it go right. But, and Michelle, I had some people who really drove me, because it takes that when you're running for office. Campaign is very, campaigning is very hard, and you always have to be motivated by people, someone to help you. But the reason, the main reason I'm running is because of students. My love for students is unbelievable, people. That's why I was a principal at two different schools, and I continue to be around students all the time. And I'm always in the community because I love students, because that's the future of America. That's the future of the world, students. And we must educate students so they can be prepared for life. And we can, we can, we got a board, we got a new board. We got, we have a new board. We have a new board, and I have confidence, I have confidence that this board would do everything in our power to make this school system better than what it is now. We can improve, and we will improve, because we're going to work hard, because one thing I believe in is teamwork. You have to have a team to win. You have to work on the same accord and understand and be here for every person. Even though I'm in District Five and I need help in District Five, I'm still here for students, no matter what district you're in. I'm still here for students. So I just wanted to say, I really, I really, really think we'll do a good job, I know we'll do a good job because we have good people on this board now. And not that we didn't, but we have educators that are here, and we have people that really want to make this board successful. So, hey, keep praying for us, and we'll bring it home. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. You really do speak from the heart.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
So what's happening next is we're going to turn the meeting over to the Superintendent for the purpose of electing a new chair and a new vice chair for the school board. Mr. Porter is going to explain the process for the elections, and then Mr. Davis will take over and preside through the election process. And then immediately following the elections, we will recess and reorganize at the dais, and we'll recess probably for about, you know, 10 minutes or so to reorganize up here. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Porter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board members, first of all, congratulations on being elected and being sworn in today. Looking forward to working with you all. Florida law requires that every year the board elect a chair. You also may elect a vice chair, which is what is traditionally done. All seven of you are eligible to be chair. Anyone may make a nomination for another board member to be chair. You may also nominate yourself. Nominations do not require a second, so the Superintendent. The Superintendent, under law, runs the nominations for vice chair and chair. The way it works is the Superintendent will ask for a nomination for chair. Again, all seven of you are eligible, and all seven of you may make a nomination. You make a nomination by raising your hand to be recognized. The Superintendent will recognize you. You'll say the nomination, a second is not required. If only one person is nominated, you'll vote and that person will be chair. If more than one person is nominated, there'll be a vote. And to be successful, you need to have four votes because that constitutes a quorum. So with that, unless there are any questions, I'll turn it over to the Superintendent to run the election for chair and vice chair. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Porter, really appreciate it. Congratulations to each of you. Look forward to our work together in order to help improve the experiences, not only for our employees, but for our students as well. So as Mr. Porter said, please note that nominations do not need a second. To be recognized, please raise your hand to make the nomination. At this point, the floor is open for nominations for chair. Mrs. Snively?
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. It is my honor to nominate Ms. Lynn Gray for chair of the school board.
Okay. Member Lynn Gray has been nominated for chair. Are there any other nominations? Okay.
If we're members, then it would be appropriate to, are we voting by lights or by hand?
We will.
By hand, okay. So, Mr. Superintendent, it would be appropriate to call for a vote, all in favor of Lynn Gray for chair, raise your hand.
Hey, all those in favors, I'm sorry.
All those in favor of Lynn Gray for chair, raise your hand.
Yes, sir. Yes. Oh, that's not, both of us are going. All those in favor for Lynn Gray for chair, please raise your hands. It is a 7-0 vote. Congratulations. Congratulations, Lynn Gray is the new chair of Hillsborough County School Board. Okay, now the floor is open for nominations for vice chair.
I would like to nominate for vice chair Stacy Han.
Stacy Han has been nominated for vice chair. Are there any other nominations? Mrs. Vaughn?
I would like to nominate Cam Perez.
Okay. Cam Perez, thank you. That's right. Cam Perez has been nominated as vice chair. Are there any other nominations? Okay, communications, at this point, all nominations are closed. Communications will distribute ballots to each board member. A member, a member must receive four votes to become the vice chair. Please write your choice for vice chair on the ballot provided to you, and Mrs. Tanya Jar will come by and pick up those ballots.
And board members, I'll remind you that the ballots are public record, so your name should be on them, and after the vote, people, they'll become public record.
Sorry. Sharvy. Okay. Congratulations, Stacy Han will be the new vice chair of Hillsborough County School Board. Congratulations. Congratulations to each. I would now turn the meeting over to our new chair, Mrs. Lynn Gray.
Okay, I believe we're going to take a 10-minute break, and I have a script, so it's official. We're, let's go ahead and recess for 10 minutes. Relax, stretch out. Thank you.
At this time, the board meeting is called back to order. We're going to look at 601, agenda item. Authorize annual meeting of the Hillsborough County School Board Leasing Corporation for Certificates of Participation Program. And I believe that our Superintendent Davis will walk us through this.
Yes, ma'am, to the chair. 601 is, as you said, is the annual meeting of Hillsborough County Leasing Corporation for Certificates of Participation Program. And I'm going to transition this over to our financial officer, Mrs. Saunders.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Yes, ma'am.
It is my pleasure to introduce Ritesh Patel. He's our bond counsel with Neighbors Giblin and Nickerson. And he will run us through, walk us through this agenda item as we have to do this every reorganization meeting for the leasing corporation. Mr. Patel, please.
I will now recess. Excuse me. I will now recess the school board meeting and convene the annual meeting of the School Board Leasing Corporation. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, members of the board. I'd like to congratulate the newly elected members of the board and those reelected. Welcome. This morning, what you have before you is the annual reorganization of the Hillsborough County School Board Leasing Corporation. Just a quick 30-second, 10,000-foot level discussion of what this leasing corp actually is. It's just a single-member alter ego of the school board, and its sole function is to facilitate long-term financings as part of your master lease certificates of participation or COPS program. Each of the members of the school board sit as members of Board of Directors of the Leasing Corporation, and there are various officers and other members of the Board of Directors. So our only function here today is to, is three things, to install some, the new members of the, or the members of the school board as members of the leasing corp, and also elect officers of the leasing corporation. The bylaws of the leasing corporation require that the annual meeting is held on the same date as the reorganization of the school board, which obviously is today. So there will be three actions you'll need to take, and I'll be happy to walk you through them one by one. The first one is to, it would be appropriate to install, appoint the members of, the current members of the school board as the Board of Directors of the Leasing Corporation. And I think we would need a motion, a second, and a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Okay, at this time, as outgoing chair, I recommend the appointment of the current members of the school board as the Board of Directors for the Leasing Corporation. Board members, I need a motion and a second. I have a motion by Member Han and a second by Member Gray. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, board members, please vote when your lights appear. And it passes unanimously. Thank you.
Great. The second item would be to recommend the appointment of the new chair, of Ms. Gray, as chair of the school board, and the vice chair, Ms. Han, as vice chair of the board as chair and vice chair of the Board of Directors of the Leasing Corporation.
Thank you. And so therefore, I need a motion and a second to appoint Member Lynn Gray as chair and president of the leasing corporation, and Member Stacy Han as vice chair and vice president of the leasing corporation, and Addison Davis as secretary treasurer of the leasing corporation. I have a motion by Member Gray and a second by Member Han. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please vote when your lights appear. And it passes unanimously. Thank you, board members. Seeing no other business, I can now adjourn the school board leasing corporation meeting, and Ms. Gray will reconvene the board member meeting.
I had a few comments that I wanted to make in lieu of the fact that we have new board members, and certainly an appreciation of our existing board members. I seem to be fighting with the microphone, so who's going to win? I, you know, it's very, very obvious that our beloved chair, Madam Snively, has done a remarkable job, and her calmness, her professionalism, and really her effective delivery capturing all of our needs during a time of not only the COVID crisis, but budget, financial, and all the other problematic situations that has come as a consequence of COVID. And our newly hired Superintendent Davis, that was all part of your tenure. I want to also give a big thanks to my new co-chair, Stacy Han, for accepting and stepping up and standing by me as we develop a cohesive, collaborative, and again, effective school board. I am reminded that every school board member and a chair comes with a different temperament. And it's interesting that I'm able to probably almost mimic our Madam Chair Snively, because I am a collaborator and a unifier, and I believe in that solidly. I've always said that when you go into a new position, and I'll just remind myself that Jesuit all-boys, I went to a school from public to private at that time, and you have to realize that when you're in a new position as a board member, who's going to change? Is it going to be the entire district, or will you have to change? And so, as you can see with previous chairs, Madam Chair Snively had to do many internal changes, which is difficult. And I would say to the new board members, you'll also have to give a little bit of yourselves in exchange for getting a lot from the work that you want to do. So that's a hard part, and we'll have to work on that. I also want to say that our challenge is all of us, and each of us must continue to work in earnest. Yeah, I wanted to say that our financial condition is critical, and I also wanted to say that our instructional pieces need to be paid attention to. And I know you know this. I mean, you're educators, and I know Members Snively and Member Han and Member Perez bring a lot to expressing the needs of our children and our financial situation. I want to expand, and we'll talk about this later, avenues of communication. Always we can do better. We always must do better. The community has spoken. That's a lot of new board members at one time. Last, I want to say to the new board members that I know that you'll be laser-focused on the well-being of our students, and you are student-centered, and I know that we'll see a lot of that dialogue coming forth, and I know that all of us appreciate that very, very much. And last, I want to thank our superintendent also. The idea that you came in beginning of a COVID crisis and really did everything you could to feed our children, to provide them with electronic devices, and really to establish a match for the needs of our communities, which, by the way, is our schools. And you have fostered a collaborative relationship and a unifying relationship, and I hope that we will always continue that. So I thank you also. That's all my comments. Thank you. And we can go ahead. If we have no further business, we can go ahead and this, and we can adjourn the meeting. There we go.